March 31st at 5:30 PM. Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parsons?
Present.
Mayor Lumber.
Here. Anybody from the public wishing to address us, the council may do so at this time. Hearing none, we'll move forward. Brian, number five, you want to give us an update on all the goings on?
Sure. I think most of you know, we followed Sioux Falls' lead today and closed the parks. The Parks Department is not going to open up the restrooms. We are getting rid of the porta-potties and we're caution taping off the play equipment. And then no organized practices or team activities at any of the park facilities. Anthony Lingan has developed a flow chart for businesses that we can share with businesses. We borrowed it from Sioux Falls. Yeah. So that'll be part of, we'll get that out on our website and Facebook, share with anybody that wants it. Anthony can give you a quick update on where he's at if you want to. Otherwise, you want me to summarize it?
You summarize it, not a lot more to it. Still contacting businesses.
Yeah, still contacting businesses, still seem to be having a pretty good support from those businesses to date, that they're implementing social distancing as best as they can. So, so far, so good. And I think that's about it. Were you on the mayor's call today?
I was.
Anything new?
Just more discussion on the, basically on Senate Bill 91 that did not pass. A lot of discussion on that and moving forward with their thinking about doing. No decisions were made.
Yeah, there were a number of bills at veto day yesterday. Christina can update you on the election bill that passed.
Elections, mandatory that they are postponed to June. It is any Tuesday in June is what you shall choose. I have a recommendation, we'll approve it Monday night. My recommendation is the June 16th. My recommendation is not to do with the primaries. I've talked to the county a little bit today. They're okay with it, but I have some reservations because you would have two different registration books, one for the primaries, one for municipal. You'd have two different poll books and you'd have two different ballot boxes. And if a ballot gets put in the wrong box, it's not counted. I would basically be running the municipal side of that and I think there's just a lot of confusion that can happen with that. I think we'll get a lot of absentee anyway. We have to keep absentee voting open through the whole entire time. So I think the majority will be that. So that would be my recommendation. But you guys will approve that Monday night. What else do I have on it?
When is the primary?
June 2nd. So I didn't want to do it the week right after, so I waited a week. The week of the 22nd, I will be out of town, so we won't be, can't do it that week. We'll have to do some new notices and new publications for voter registration date will change again and notice of election will change. Nothing will change on the candidates themselves and the candidate deadlines. Those are, those are done. It would be just the, basically the election is moved. That's, that's it. I have notified the candidates. I've notified the main, one that was on the fireworks petition. So they've all been notified that it'll be moved to June and I will let them know for sure on the date.
We're not dealing with it tonight, but as council, I would encourage you all to accept and approve Christina's recommendation on their, the June 2nd primary. It, it sounds real good to run it with the primary. It just doesn't work, folks. I've been doing elections for a long time in the Brandon Valley Schools District. Number one, they don't want us in there, causes them a lot of issues. Number two, it just doesn't work. So as cumbersome as it sounds, to have one right after that, it is a, it's a better situation.
Yeah.
The possibility that it will, in addition to this, it'll fall in line with the school board election, but it's way less, lesser evil than the other, the alternative. So we'll deal with that if we have to deal with that. So that'll come up on Monday, I imagine.
Yes.
You'll have the... June 16th.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so we'll deal with it at that time, but like I said, I would encourage you to, strongly encourage you to accept the recommendation because it comes forward from Christina.
Just, just one reminder with closing of the parks, it is a misdemeanor or a class two misdemeanor if they're found to be in violation. I thought we were going to go out hunting them, but...
Okay, so can people walk through the parks and things like that? We're not blocking parks totally off?
No, we're not, we're not blocking the parks off. We're just blocking off the play structures and the fields, soccer fields, baseball softball fields are the only things we're restricting. Are we going to go down there and arrest somebody?
What are the kids going to do? I mean, if they're hooked up in the house?
Sir, sir, you're out of line. If we had community discussion there and it was your chance to come up and talk at that point, so I have to curtail it.
So I, you know, we're, we're not, chances are we're going to take a somewhat friendly approach to ask them to leave first, you know, and then if they choose not to, then we might take additional enforcement action, but...
You're talking about on the play structures? So if a couple of kids are over there playing catch or something like that, is that a violation?
Technically, yes. You know, like I said, we'll, we'll ask them to...
I am quite sure that the Brandon Police Department knows how to handle situations like this and they will do a very, very fine job. Right, we're not going to get into the details of what's going to constitute a fine and whatnot.
We're, we're more concerned...
They're going to enforce it.
If people are in, in the park, walking through the park, is that a violation?
It is not.
Or are we just saying, stay out of the park?
No, we're, you know, you can walk through the parks, it's like Sioux Falls, they're not closing their trails or anything like that. This is more geared towards organized team activities.
And the play equipment.
And the play equipment.
Okay. Which is, in addition to that, I have, we have closed down all the play equipment at the, at the school district, all schools. I don't, I haven't been by yet today, see if they got it roped off or whatever, but I instructed them to do that.
I can just make a quick comment. I had a little criticism on this this afternoon as well, and I just want the public to be understanding how important it is for the entire region to all follow in line with the doing your part on social distancing, because if, if we didn't close our parks and Sioux Falls did, then we're just inviting people to come use our parks. So that's not protecting our citizens. I think it's the right call. It's, it's not popular, but it's the right thing to do.
As I have said from day one with all of you guys, I will take my direction from the mayor of the city of Sioux Falls and the governor of the state of South Dakota. We are going to fall in line with the mayor of Sioux Falls. That is what we are going to do with all of these things. That's what we have to do is that, you, you have to have some form of solidarity or whatever you want to call it with those things. And my direction will be taken from those people.
I think that's all the updates.
Number six is considered the second reading, reading of ordinance number 606, declaring a health emergency and limiting the public gatherings within the city.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the second reading of ordinance 606 as laid out. Any further discussion? Questions on the part of the council? Going to effect immediately?
Correct.
And then how often are we going to reevaluate? Are we going to...
Each meeting.
Every, every board meeting, every council meeting.
We'll be back at each, not briefing meetings, but so next Monday it will be on the agenda and every regular and or special meeting that we call.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven is a revolving loan fund emergency program. Mr. Tripp is going to speak to that.
First of all, thank you. As that discussion proves, I know you guys are up and gals are up to a lot of unique decisions. This is uncharted territory for cities, states, and businesses. So first of all, Steve Tripp, 317 South Street. I'm here to actually represent the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund Committee or Board. And Christina, thank you for sending this out. You all should have kind of a rundown of what I'm going to present tonight, starting with the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund COVID-19 Loan Response Page. The second page into that is titled Brandon Revolving Loan Fund. I just want to spend just a few minutes and explain who we are, if you don't know who we are or what it is. This fund was established in 1987. It was funds from the state of South Dakota. I want to make sure we all understand this is not Brandon City taxpayer dollars, okay? This was block grant funds that were given to communities throughout the state of South Dakota to use to enhance small businesses, to give them an option, option to finance projects, maybe a bridge with actual bank loans and things like that. So I just want to make sure we understand it's not city taxpayer dollars that we're talking about tonight. The city of Brandon is the sole member of the loan foundation and then it's governed by a board of directors. We met last night, about a week ago, as an entrepreneur myself. Weird thoughts come through our heads at weird times of the day and 3 o'clock in the morning, 2:30, whenever it was, I thought, you know, we have this, this fund, could we turn this in to something or develop a plan as a collective group along with the city of Brandon to help our Brandon businesses only, okay? So I threw some scratch together, then typed it and quasi presented it to a board last night, and then with a lot smarter people than myself, we developed what we're going to go through this evening, okay? In that same Brandon Revolving Loan Foundation note that you have in front of you, one of the things I want to highlight too is that our following criteria on number one, the loan will be made to induce a business to locate, expand, or remain in the city of Brandon. I want to stick with the remain in the city of Brandon as we talk tonight. I would also plead for all of the council members and the mayor and, and city employees to kind of put a non-traditional thought process hat on tonight while we go through this. As we turn the page, I call it the short shelf life. This is not something that, and again, as an entrepreneur and a business person, I can make decisions and activate them 10 minutes later. I get government is not all like that on a daily basis, so I respect that. But for this to work, we truly need to act fast, swiftly, you know, carefully, but at the same time to make it the ease of this to truly work for the Brandon businesses. The local Brandon business facts I just threw on here, I don't want to put a book on here, but this has expanded through this afternoon with more comments from local businesses. But I just, I noted that I worked with a local business that we all know, they estimated their sales going into this year of 850,000. COVID rears its ugly face. We now drop sales to an estimated 300,000 if it doesn't deteriorate past what it already has this week, which frankly, it, it may do that because of the changes that all of you have to make, the state has to make in, in different cities. Another business talked about the revenues being down 70% already, knowing that the delivery is an option and the grab and go is an option. But even if they make up 10 points, that's a 60% cut in revenue for that local business person. And I'm going to venture to say everybody in this room, besides retired people, but including them has not and would not want to take a 60% hit. Of course, they've all, a lot of them have gone to a change of business hours. Some of them did it before the difficult decisions that all you made. Some of them changed their services all, altogether. Their rent, their lease payments are still due. Some building owners we're speaking with are working with them, but let's face it, the building owners are small business folks too, so they got to keep, keep their progress going. Another story was payroll was estimated going into this year of 280,000. COVID rears its ugly face and we're going to drop that to 106,000 for estimated payroll. So these are live stories in Brandon only. Those are not, I don't want to get political and talk about the federal side or even the state side. That is in our backyard on our main street, okay? So with that being said, here's our proposed plan. We're here tonight, or I'm here tonight, we're here tonight, on behalf of the, the committee, we would love to ask the, the city council to look at approving to free up 300,000 of our 581,000 balance that we have in our cash balance fund today. If you would agree to that approval, we would tie it to your ordinance 606. So what I'm saying there is that if you approve that bucket of money, we don't randomly go out and write checks, we'll get to that point, but we would tie it to your ordinance 606. So why that's in force, that if approved, that bucket of money would be available. So as we're having these discussions with the businesses, we know how far and how fast we can act, okay? Once that ordinance 606 is removed, or whatever you guys call it on the city side, that 300,000 would shift back into that restricted fund or whatever the terminology that Christina would tell us that is. I don't even know if it's restricted, but it would go back into that cash balance and that would stop what we're going to present tonight, okay? So we, again, we need to free up the money. We would then create loans in two increments is our initial thought to keep it simple and easy, 10, $20,000 increments to these businesses. My little note there is depending on how many go for the 10 or the 20, could be 15 to 30 businesses. Frankly, last night I sat up here and said that we may get two to four to six. I don't know, folks, the, the phone keeps ringing, we keep having discussions on what I do professionally, trying to adjust payrolls and, and sales figures for these commercial businesses. It could be more, okay? So I don't know. We would defer the payments for 12 months. We would amortize that, whatever it is, the 10 or the 20,000 over five years at 0% interest. So this is not meant for an all here, this is meant for a quick response from our local community to support Brandon businesses. Next page, the application itself would be real basic. I call it a no red tape application. Some of the questions are listed there. I did ask Christina, I think, if she was able to sneak the quasi application out for your review too, that hopefully you have in front of you and what that looks like. But very simple, very quick for the consumer to, or the business owner to complete. There would be no financials requested from there. We would get that application in, or we'd get the application request in. I would create the document or have a team member create the document in what we call write signature. We would email that out to the business owner to complete and sign. At the same time that email goes out, all of the board members of the revolving loan fund would be included in that e-signature document to review it, look at it, and sign it if they approved it at that point. From there, it would be, it would come back into my office in the private sector, and if all signatures were on that application, we would forward that to Christina's desk. Again, that would be a loan recommendation from our group. That would not be a loan approval. That would be a loan recommendation from the board of the fund back to this room, but it would go through Christina or whoever, however you told us to do that, okay? It would then go to the next city council meeting, which is already next on the 6th, I believe, and you collectively would approve that based on our recommendation and Christina would cut the checks the next day. We would pick the checks up and either the chair, board members, what I ideally like, understanding the social distancing piece, but I think there's a way to deliver a check safely rather than mailing it out, again, just to build the relationship between the city and the small business sector in Brandon, South Dakota, okay? Next piece is the timeline, and it's a quick timeline, folks. It is, and it, and it has to be, or at least that's what we're proposing and have more discussion here when I'm done. But last night, we, we proposed it to the loan fund, we made additional tweaks to it. We did vote to bring it here to you tonight on the 31st. If approved, we're going to act quickly and swiftly tonight to get a statement out to Jill at the paper, a Facebook post that will then be posted and hopefully shared and get some wheels underneath it and get it out there. There'd be some phone calls made, maybe some emails exchanged from the board to local businesses that we know already are in dire straits, or maybe that's not the right term, are struggling and, and do not have a plan short term. That board meeting on the 6th, I would love to have the application, the recommendations to you guys and gals to approve the first roll of it. And again, maybe we're talking one, maybe we're talking zero, I don't know. But I really, truly feel strongly that we need to do something as a community, as a city, and as local business, okay? So with that being said, I want to keep it fairly short and sweet and get to open dialogue. Excuse me. Where I sit, I don't have a dog, or excuse me, a horse in the race. We are a central business. We're lucky in the insurance world that we're, it's a renewal business, which Ms. Clark knows, so we're blessed to keep our people employed, full staff, and here to service our clients. So, and it's not like that around the city of Brandon. We have a lot of people in, in, in tough situations already. This is not the solve all. This, and again, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on the federal side. I truly believe here as a small business owner, the federal relief that's going to come is going to work well. I think it's going to bring your business owners back to square one, but it's going to take time, it's going to take paperwork, and you guys all know that as far as city and how they, how they work. So with that, I do appreciate it. I know you guys have plenty of business to work on, I included. My wife wondered why I took on another project right now, but I felt obligated to do it. I really did. I feel strongly about this and I'm open to take any questions or concerns, comments, pros, cons.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. The app looks nice and, and simple. Is there something then that they sign contractually that commits to the repayment terms? And then my part B question to that would be what do we have in place for any potential default on payments a year down the road when those start?
Great question. We talked a lot about this last night. And Mr. Parsons had the same concerns you did from the banking background, I think. Here's my thought, or my, or my opinionated statement. Could we have default? We could, right? Do I think we will? I don't. Do we do nothing and then they default and they move out of town and now we're trying to get more in? That's my, that's my concern. Could we have them sign a promissory note type? I did research SBA loans this morning. There's some things I originally put in there, Ms. Clark and I took back out simply because for a $10,000 note, if I walk away from you guys, as a, from the city of Brandon, because I couldn't make it in this most obnoxious state of business sense we're in, right? Uncharted territory. If I was sitting where any of you were to go back after a business to try to collect that $10,000, if I was truly going to walk away from you, I think that'd be the worst political move in, in the city of Brandon. But, but I get your, I get your concern, right? My, my comfort with that, not having it, is again, it's not city taxpayer funds, it's revolving loan funds that were created in 87. I wish I could give you what the balance that we started with versus what the balance is to show you what was earned off interest, right? Because that's the mentality, it's just going to keep revolving. We don't, I don't have that information. I don't even know if it's able to be found. It's, it's that old, you know? But to your point, I respect it. It is a, it's, it's going to be a discussion point tonight, I know, because it's, but it's, it's a risk we take in it.
So you would propose, Steve, that we not have them sign just a unsecured promissory note?
If we could find something very simple, the, the information I found out there, I'm just not willing to put on paper. I know Lisa's here, but I guess my only thing there is I don't want to burn the midnight oil and burn her time to try to put something crazy together because of the mentality, would you guys really go after them? I don't know. Now, does it make them more adhere to the contract? Maybe, yeah. I mean, so that, I don't have a problem putting it in there, but if we're going to put it in there, again, all of this, we have to act fast, you know? So it would have to be a blessing by this group to say, yeah, we're okay with that wording. It's very simple, to the point.
And I don't want to speak for Lisa, but I've seen very simple one-page, not even this big.
Right. I could get something tomorrow that's three or four sentences, not secured by anything that just says I agree to pay it back and it's a written agreement, it's a contract, and if you guys decide to enforce it a year from now, if they default, that's up to you, but we certainly could do something very simple.
If it's simple and quick and easy and doesn't take a ton of time, I would vote we put it in.
Okay.
If, if the rest of the board from the revolving side feels the same way, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
I agree. I just worry about the precedent we would set if we just are handing it out without any type of commitment for repayment.
Yep, nope, understandable. And we talked a lot about that last night, so I wouldn't have a problem at all.
If we can keep it simple, that would be good. In reading the application, there, in my simple mind, the part where it says, I understand that I must begin principal payments on January 1st, 2021, it's almost as good as a simple promissory note, isn't it? But I, I don't want to talk about that anymore.
Yeah.
If you can get something simple. But my tenure with you is that you, we don't deal in simple when we get there, so we want to deal in simple. Three, four sentences, max.
Okay, all right. What else? What else is out there? What other concerns, thoughts?
What's the term? Length of time?
Five years.
Five years.
We'd defer the payment for the first year, okay? So we'll defer the payment for a year before they have to start paying it back, and then we'll run it out over five years. So if it's 20,000 divided by five, 10,000 divided by five. Yep. Make it simple for them. And again, this is, to me, it's just, it's quick action. It's not the, not the solution for the whole scenario for what they have going in front of them, but this will buy them some time to get the paperwork for the other stuff.
It is a change of the, the original intent of the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund was to attract new businesses, bring in employees and, and stuff, but it is a change from that. But I think what better change to protect a business right now? That's our main goal here is to keep the ones that we have going.
It's also a great collaboration between the council, this revolving loan fund board, and then Steve just as a volunteer to take this on. So it's a great collaboration of all that. I support.
Where will we host it? So I, I intend to make a few phone calls tonight to folks that I think maybe could use some help. Where would they go to find it?
We can have the applications here, or we can put them on our website and they can just copy them off and fill them out and bring it back.
Or if you prefer, again, to keep it, as much as we can keep off, I know your desks are full, I'm willing to take our team member here in the Brandon office, she can house them. If somebody texts us, if somebody emails her, if somebody calls us, she'll kick it off to them. And then again, she gets to control the signature pieces for us. And then that way it takes it off the taxpayer dollars in time of, of your employees. I mean, I appreciate it, but I think where I sit here as I look at the transparency and some of the challenges you all have been faced with over the years, I love this community. I grew up here, I live here, I have businesses here, but the more we can do this and keep it clean, cut, to the point, straightforward, the better off I think we're all going to be. And I'm willing to do that in the private sector rather than floating it over to the, to the taxpayer sector.
So I have a quick question.
Yes.
So obviously it'll go to everyone on the board and then it comes to us on Monday night, but then we have to wait another two weeks until we meet again to approve more? So the more we can get out there now, I mean, because then we don't meet again until April 20th?
Correct.
That's right? Okay.
If there's a big rush, you know, I can talk to the mayor and maybe possibly schedule a special meeting with the council. We've got time. We can do that.
How we're, how we're going to deal with that is that I'm going to eliminate the briefing meetings in this interim, try to cut the meetings down a little bit. All your questions will be funneled there, so if we have to have a special meeting, it, it'll kind of be made up that we don't have to have that briefing meeting.
And just, just as a point of reference, we're not going to include the entire application in the packet because there will be some proprietary data. So it's just going to basically be, be the business name and the amount. That's all it will be.
And I would, I would definitely concur that I want that stuff running through. And it's not Steve Tripp volunteer. In a way, it's volunteer, but it's Steve Tripp, a member of the Revolving Loan Fund Board that's running, rambling this thing. That's, so I like the fact that it's going to run through you and or and or your office or whatever, and you can handle all the signatures and do that. You're a member of that board. So it's a good thing to to do it that way. And then it turns over to City Hall after you're done with all the paperwork.
Correct. And, you know, I guess I would hope that collectively, if if we're truly working together, to Vicki's point, when when those requests come in, if they do, and again, I don't know. I don't know what this is going to look like once it's front-facing, right? If we do have an influx, and we're, the the board is going to review all those first, just like we would if we were loaning money normally. So I want the confidence of the council to be that this is is not something that's not going to be looked at, right, with a set eyes before it even hits your desk. So we're not going to be in here hopefully for hours talking through the applications if that that we recommend it. We're going to, we're going to try to, honestly, I don't know what what we'd really kick out, but there could be something, right? Right now, I would speak of like an in-home business. I'd be cautious to see how they're affected and, you know, have dialogue with them. I mean, have that open dialogue. But I really think our initial push here is going to be the stuff that we all have seen or heard of right here on, for the most part, the streets of Brandon. Yeah.
That was just my point. Just I want to make sure they gain the help. It seems, we know this is changing every day. So that's why I'm just thinking, like, two weeks, that seems long. So I just want to make sure that businesses are getting the help they want in a timely manner, if they seek it, like you said. But yeah.
I would add that this is not going to be a burden. It's going to be light on this board either. This can be a heavy burden on you guys because you're going to get things that you know other things about, and it's going to be a burden on you guys. I I get it. But it's a burden that you're willing to bear, and I think we should press forward with it.
I would just add, having been on the loan fund since, I'll date myself back in the 90s at some point, they all, we all work really well together, and we're used to working remotely or with emails or something. So I feel confident that we can handle this. And I thank Steve for putting this together.
I just started. We all kind of chipped in, and so it's been a collective, and that's really what I want. It's what we, how we have to look at. I really don't like standing up here. I'd rather be sitting next to you to present this because to the public, we have to be together. We have to be full support of this. And tonight, when you finally vote, it has to be all in because it can't be the recommendations with, you know, the uneasiness of the council. We have to be all in and just be one when we roll this out to the community because I think it's a great, great PR move. So.
That being said, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion to second to approve an interim emergency loan revolving loan fund program as presented tonight to the council. Christina, you can get into the details in the minutes and whatnot, and our city attorney will add some language for a short promissory note language in there also. Any other questions from the council?
Oh, are you going to put any contact with the?
So one note, could we not use the word emergency, Mayor?
Okay.
Maybe COVID-19 loan response revolving Brandon loan revolving Brandon Revolving Loan Fund response. I just think emergency might, every psyche is different. And having 28 employees, I've noticed and learned that this is affecting everybody so much different that I just hate to use the term emergency. So if if you're okay with that, that's my own thought.
Yep. Just call it the revolving loan fund COVID-19 program, Christina. No further questions? Christina, call the roll, please, quickly.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
That's it for our agenda. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn at 6:07 PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
So we're not having briefing then?
I want to call that off, yeah. And just funnel all your questions to City Hall when the agenda calls out, comes out.
Don't try to get the packets out.
Okay.
Right.
Give you Friday's day.